I will call the work session of the Portsmouth City Council for today, January 24th. Order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the room?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mayor Rupp.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a continuation of our discussion, our very rich discussion last night on the budget. And at the conclusion of our discussion tonight, we will have an opportunity to give the city manager our budget concerns, our priorities, things that we'd like to see her address, if possible, in the upcoming budget proposal that she's going to present later in the spring. Dr. Patton.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This evening, Mr. Brian Casey, Budget Officer, will present our five-year forecast that will enable City Council and the community to discuss policy decisions with greater awareness of our long-term financial implications. Through this process and strategy, we can seek to achieve a balance of physical accountability, physical strength, accountability, and results that the community values. Following Mr. Casey's presentation, the FY 2018 Budget Calendar Review will be guided by Mrs. Gloria Washington of our budget team. This calendar will offer opportunities for City Council and citizen engagement. And as the mayor said, following those two presentations, there will be a discussion of the FY 18 proposed strategic budget focus areas for your review, discussion, and insight as our staff continue to develop the FY 2018 budget. Mr. Casey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, Council members. Tonight, I'll be presenting a summation of the five-year forecast. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that governments at all levels forecast major revenues and expenditures. National credit rating agencies consider multi-year financial planning as a best practice for highly rated local governments. Long-term financial planning is the process of aligning financial capacity of long-term service objectives. It will serve as a link between departments and city management. This conservative forecast should not be confused with the budget. It is a planning tool to help management cope with the uncertainty of the future. Several methodologies were utilized to formulate the forecasts. Time series analysis involves comparisons of same items, such as monthly sales revenue, over a significantly long period to detect general patterns of a relationship between associated factors or variables and project the future direction of the patterns. The Hampton Road CPI measures the changes and the practices paid by urban consumers for a representative basket of goods and services. A historical trend analysis was also utilized to provide the financial story of the city in recent years and to assist in monitoring the impact of key decisions. The Budget Office met with the City Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue, City Real Estate Assessor, Economic Development, City Planning, Permits, and Inspections to formulate and review revenue trends. We also consulted with Finance and Budget Departments from neighboring localities to ensure that we use best practices for the forecast. From FY 2018 through FY 2019, general fund revenue is projected to remain strong or relatively flat. We decreased revenues by 1.6 million in FY 18 and FY 19 in anticipation of the VIG revenue loss. We also are anticipating a 1% increase in real estate tax assessments for FY 18 and have factored in this conservative estimate for the remainder of the forecast years. FY 2020 through FY 2022, general fund revenue is expected to increase by 1% annually. Fund balance used for the adopted FY 2017 budget is 6 million, and that's 4 million transferred to CIP and 2 million for the one-time bonus. For FY 2018, fund balance is projected to slightly decrease to 5.5 million for one-time expenditures in CIP projects. The plan is to use less fund balance to continue to preserve the city's strong credit rating. As you can see, we start to gain momentum in FY 2020. From FY 18 to FY 22, revenues are projected to grow by 3.4%. The city's projected expenditures are based on historical trend analysis and the Hampton Roads Consumer Price Index averaged over the past year, past three years, excuse me, which equates to nine tenths of a percent. As the most widely used measure of inflation, CPI is an indicator of the effectiveness of government policy. From FY 2018 to FY 2022, expenditures are projected to grow by 1.3%. The FY 2018 forecast at this time does not include funds for recurring raises based on projected fiscal constraints. I attended the VML Finance Forum a few weeks ago, and the state is proposing a 1.5% bonus for state employees and constitutional officers in FY 18 versus recurring salaries. So we will be monitoring the upcoming legislative session closely. We are starting to review the FY 2018 budget submissions. Therefore, there may be a few additional critical service needs identified, which will add to the FY 2018 forecast. At this point in the forecast, funding is level for Portsmouth Public Schools, the schools' local shares included and non-departmental. Now, this chart kind of pulls everything together, every line item in the budget, and it gives you a snapshot of the expenses compared to revenues over the next five years. Fiscal 2018 and fiscal year 2019 have been reduced by 1.6 million, as previously stated, due to the anticipated loss of personal property revenue from VIG. If it does not occur, the forecast can be easily updated and adjusted. This is a living document. The FY 2018 variance is 1.8 million, excuse me, and FY 2019 is 2.8 million. I just want to reiterate that this is the planning tool. More refinement will occur throughout the next two months based on feedback from City Council priorities, budget defense meetings, meetings with Portsmouth Public Schools, and as we receive updated information from the state. Dr. Patton.
How late is it? Do you have any questions?
Ms. Washington.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Washington.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of City Council. On January Saturday, 28th, is the first of the three community engagement meetings to be hosted by the City Manager, Dr. Patton, and the Superintendent of Public Schools, Dr. Bracy. This is our second year in engaging our citizens on strategic school and city service areas. Last year, we had almost 160 citizens to engage for the three community engagement meetings. The first meeting will be held at Wilson High School from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. The second budget engagement is Thursday, February 2nd, at IC Norcom High School from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. And the third and final budget engagement will be Monday, February 6th, at Churchland High School from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. These sessions will provide the public an opportunity to participate in an interactive survey promethion device known as clickers and a brief question-and-answer session at the end. If members of the public are unable to attend, the survey and information on the session will be available on the city's website. We have already had, per our Director of Marketing and Communications, 80 citizens on the website the first day that it was put out there, one day after being posted on the website. That's a very good number. Yes.
Everybody knows what she's talking about.
Yes.
Yeah.
How many?
I did it myself.
300, Mayor.
300.
Just updated by the IT. It was 88 on Sunday.
So we're up to 300 have taken the survey.
And I encourage my colleagues to take the survey, too.
Okay. That's great.
The resulting data from the live sessions, along with the online data, will be summarized and provided to the public, along with communication to our City Council and the school board. Some other key budget calendar dates are the school board will adopt the proposed budget on Thursday, March 23rd. Friday, March 24th, is the deadline for school budget requests to be submitted to City Council. A key date, Monday, March 27th, is the City Manager presentation of the proposed FY 2018 budget. And Tuesday, April 25th, is our City Council meeting, the public hearing on proposed operating CIP budget, tax rates, and if we have any fee The last date that we would like to reiterate is the final adoption of the 2018 budget, which is Tuesday, May 9th, the regular City Council meeting for operating budgets, school budgets, CIP, tax rates, and fees. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Questions?
I just have one question back to Brian's report on the five-year forecast. In fiscal year 2018 and 2019, we're spending, we have more expenses than we have revenue for those first two years.
You could flip it back.
Yes, right there.
Right there.
Right there.
Okay.
In fiscal year 2018 and 2019, look like the expenses are more than the revenue in my house. You've got to have more money coming in than you're spending, so.
Definitely, Laura. And that's why we wanted to put this chart up here. It's called a combo chart, so you can see what that 1.6 million from VIG is going to do to our bottom line.
You don't cancel.
It's what we wanted to tell.
You're going to take that to the governor tomorrow, right?
Yes. Oh, you're not going?
Anything else?
In your model, I heard you mention for the schools, it's assumed to be level funding. Why was that assumption put in the model?
Well, we have not received their budget yet. So in his actual preparation, we cannot assume anything but what it is now until the school superintendent presents on Friday. We begin our meeting at 9:00 till 11:00 on Friday.
Well, I'm assuming that level funding, I thought you said it was assumed throughout the...
Level is what we gave them last year.
Right.
So until we get their budget, we can't.
No, no. What I was asking, the forecast, are we through '22? Is that level funding assumed throughout?
No, it's not. You can see the revenues and expenses here, so...
No, I mean for the schools.
For the schools, yes. Yes, sir.
That's what I was asking. Why is it, why is it assumed to be level funding all the way out to...
Because we haven't received anything from the schools. So it'll be adjusted every year, but this is just a time and place right now where we're at.
We have nothing but what the numbers are right here.
Any more questions? Dr. Patton?
Is everybody comfortable with the budget calendar? No concerns, no heartburn.
Which do I touch, Deborah, to go where I go?
Yes, ma'am.
The, Dr. Patton, the budget events that are at the schools, are they all the same? If you go to Churchland, do you need to go to Wilson? Or are they the same thing each time?
They're the same presentation, just the different time of day, allowing citizens to have choice.
There's no reason to go to more than one. It's the same presentation.
It's the same presentation, but there are some citizens that choose to come to all three and participate. But it's the same presentation at all three. Okay. And we do ask when we have citizens who have attended one or two to attend, but, you know, not participate in the survey because we've already collected their data in the survey. So we do remind them of that. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as the mayor and I indicated earlier, we're going to take an opportunity to look at the FY 2018 proposed strategic budget focus areas. And for the 2018 budget process, we are adhering to themes to guide the process and the development of the municipal budget. The themes are to review. And review means taking a formal assessment or examination of all aspects of the department's budget with the possibility or intention of instituting change where necessary. To reflect, to think deeply and carefully about the department goals and formulate cost-effective plans with careful consideration for all budget recommendations. Refocus, focus attention on resources, or doing things differently, setting priorities in city programs, or using different approaches to the delivery of services through combined services and collaboration. All of the participants in this budget process received the same budget themes. And our last theme, and a new theme for this year's, is to restore. And restore, we are focusing on strengthening and re-establishing attention or revenues for all core city programs and service delivery. Provide new energy to better maximize the city's resources, realigning with the City Council's existing vision principles. This evening, Mayor and members of council, this presentation discussion highlights the proposed FY strategic focus areas for your review and discussion. We have listened from not only our engagement with citizens, we've listened to our newly council members who've joined the council. We've listened to council members who have shared with us over the months what their concerns are. So this is a snapshot of all we've heard, and so I will talk about each of them and give you an opportunity to engage, discuss, and add to this list as we go forward. Employee compensation. Further direction, we have received from the past City Council and citizens, a top compensation priority is public safety, which includes police, FAR, EMS, and 911 dispatchers. A request for examining city employees who make less than $30,000 a year. This is below what the research shows is a sustainable living wage. And we will review the compensation for general employees. So when we think about employee compensation, those are three different areas of which we are focusing our attention on. Citywide maintenance. The strategy encompassing addressing priorities and deferred maintenance on our infrastructure and assets. This includes infrastructure roads, public buildings, sanitary sewer, and water lines. Capital projects. These projects include bridge construction to water and sewer rehabilitation projects impacting all areas of our city. The needs for consideration of a public safety building to a trucks and fire station are also a part of the capital projects area. Education. The future growth of the city is dependent on continuing to build a strong education system, both operationally, instructionally, and well-maintained school buildings. Community engagement. Engaging our citizens through education, health-related issues, promoting sustainability and affordability. It is through these conversations that we will grow a citizenry that is more engaged in the future of our city. Information technology. Accelerated economic growth with respect to economic development. We are tasked with retooling a changing technology infrastructure to support a thriving citizenry. Focusing on cloud-based programming with emphasis on core service, resiliency platforms. Many of these initiatives are necessary to replace outdated and aging systems that will not be supported in the near future and to provide better network resilience and security of the city's network, to include citywide fiber network. Retirement and OPEB funding. Developing a strategic plan that sets up an irrevocable trust and fund the arc is necessary to reduce future retirement requirements. Realignment of fees and rates. From our budget defense hearings with city department directors, we've learned that there are significant reasons to align the city's fees and rates. One reason is parity with other localities in the region and enable consistent and regular maintenance of infrastructure systems, thereby ensuring effective and efficient service delivery to our citizens. And then identify alternate revenue sources. Over the past eight months, now having a grants officer, we're strategically targeting attention on grants, which cover every department within our municipal government. And we are looking to find new revenue streams and strategies to ensure physical sustainability, finding creative and revenue-neutral initiatives to fund projects. What I'd like to do now is Mrs. Oglesby will bring up a page where, as you share your ideas, we'll actually capture them in real time.
All right. Any questions on the PowerPoint presentation?
And you have, you have the list in front of you on your...
Dr. Patton, now, let's capture our thoughts in real time in the Word document.
I can actually sit down. I don't have to stand here for this yet because she's going to capture the little clock.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready?
Yes.
I'm not sure that this is necessarily a forward budget item or a now item.
Okay.
But I would, if my colleagues agree, I would like to put the matter of the one-time bonus for our retirees. Ask the manager to bring us an ordinance, four or $500 bonus for our retirees. We gave our active employees a $1,000 bonus in this past year's budget. In all the years I've been paying attention to city government, we have always, the city has always given the retirees half of what the employees got. And we had some discussion about $500 for retirees, and we heard from some retirees at the podium, but we kind of brushed it off and brushed it off. And I'd kind of like to, if you all agree, to bring an ordinance to the table unless decided yes or no.
I think bringing the ordinance right now is, I thought she was taking ideas for what we want to see in the budget. Bringing the ordinance means we've decided to do it, and I think we...
Well, no, I meant so we could vote on it.
That's what I'm saying. She's, maybe I misunderstood what you're doing. You're getting ideas for what you should be focusing on when you, what you present to us in March.
Yes.
That's what I said. This is, this may be a now and not a later.
She clarified what she was saying, that this is really a current budget year. And so let's, let's handle that. To restate what I understand.
That's what I meant. Thank you.
Yeah.
We came up.
What you're asking is that this, if, if the majority of council agrees that we ask the city manager to bring a ordinance appropriating the funds necessary to give a one-time bonus for retirees in the current fiscal year. Did I say it correctly?
That's exact, yes. Thank you.
All right.
I want to, we want to know what that number is.
She said forward to...
Does everybody understand the question?
The total number is.
Oh, I don't have that.
Yes, sir.
But that would be incorporated into the order?
Yeah, whatever we bring back before you all review.
Who's not agreeable to that? Okay. And we'll put it on the agenda for the next regular meeting. Mr.?
Also, Mayor, it kind of goes along with that, although I don't think, I think that's in the existing budget. But the HRA, which was meant to offset our retirees switching off the city's health plan, that's $1,400. And I know we had discussed a stopgap measure of a clickdown, but we, we need to, we need to keep that where it is, not increase it, but keep it at $1,400. I think it goes right along with, you know, what we committed to, and we need to, we need to live up to our commitment. And speaking of the bonus, there's a long, many years that we've made it a ritual, given the retirees 50% of what the general wage employees got. So the $500 that Councilwoman Simmons was speaking of is something that I do support in doing.
But that's for next year. Your HRA is for next year. We've already decided this year, right?
Yeah. HRA would be for the new budget, new fiscal year.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, we would have to bring back, our previous council voted on a five-year piece in the HRA. And it, this year, I think it's 1,200, 2,000, no, what is it?
No, we just stepped down to...
So it's a, we have something that council voted on and agreed upon, which turns it out for the five years. So we would have to bring that back so that council can see exactly what is in place now over the five-year period.
And that's what Councilman Moody is asking. Is the step down, from my edification, is the step down occurring this year, this calendar year?
Yes, sir.
And so actually, it was right the first time it needs to be in the current budget.
I thought we held it off.
Yeah, I thought we...
We would have to bring that back because we don't have that right in front. But here's a chart with the five years.
Yeah, I thought we held it off to July the 1st.
We'll, we'll bring it back.
I understand. Let me restate what you're, you're saying, is that you would like to maintain the $1,400 for 2017?
Yes.
Okay.
The council voted not to do that.
Well, he's asking that, just like the bonus, that it be put on the next year. That would go under current budget. All right, any other current budget items? All right, let's go to 2018. You heard the city manager's focus. What direction, this is like a Christmas list, what, what things would you like to see the city manager address in her budget proposal?
I have, I think the budget should reflect an increase in education, that amount to be determined. And also, it should account for cutting off funding of the Sports Hall of Fame.
All right.
And...
Mayor, I think we have already cut off funding for the Sports Hall of Fame. I think that was, the previous council did that.
It was funded last, it was funded last...
Well, in the current budget, but we had agreed to, in the fiscal budget coming up, we had agreed it was down to zero.
Well, I just want to make sure it remains zero. Also, would like to see the vacancies that are present and what that cost would be if those vacancies were not in the budget. And vacancies that have been, been there for one year, positions, and what that accounts for in the budget.
So you want to see a report on vacancies that have existed for one year?
Right, right. Which, which, and how much that accounts for in the budget.
All right. Let's make sure we get that. Is that what you want? Is that what you want? Does that?
As a now, as a now.
May, does that reflect what you just said?
Right.
Good. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have a wish list because I'm the, I'm the, you know, all great ideas come with a price tag guy. So I just want to see the price tag for all the great ideas and then a, an offset of how, how you, how you pay for them. To include the 1.7 million dollars if, if nothing happens from, from the state, what do we not do? What do we cut? Or where do we get the, get the additional sources of revenue to make up that 1.7 million dollars along with all the other great things we put on the board? Because I think you, I think you start there because we know that's, that is upon us for sure. And we start there before you go back and in and throwing other things on, on the file. We got that, that, that we know we got, we got to take care of. So I just like to know what the ideas are for that before I start throwing anything else on the, on the power.
I just view this as a, most of it as a wish list.
Yeah, but you, we wish, you've got to be realistic, Bill. You being here, knowing that all wishes come, come with a price tag. And we, we don't want to lead people down the wrong path and think we can do all these great things, but we, we all know we.
Believe me, I'm keenly aware.
Let me just.
Yes, sir.
Just make sure, instead of cut, eliminate, I don't want to have a double meaning there. Instead of cut funding the Sports Hall of Fame, yeah, eliminate.
Change the word cut to eliminate.
Eliminate.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, what I had hoped is that the, these are just proposed, these areas like employee compensation or citywide maintenance, the council would say, you know, employee compensation is an area that we'd really like for you to look at, or this area, whatever. Are we saying all of these proposed, that are here, these are, this is a wish list?
Yes.
Or a discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the things you had up there were great. I mean.
Your list is perfect.
Okay, all right. So now we need to massage and work on.
I think it's going to be particularly, you know, I'm going to rah-rah for the employee compensation, but I'm also curious, and I'm sure I'm going to be embarrassed when you bring back the, the under $30,000 list.
Yes, you will be.
Of the, of the city employees. As much as we want to talk about fair compensation across the region, I'm sure that list is going to amaze us all.
So, so Mayor, what I think I heard Councilwoman Simmons says is the rah-rah cheer-cheer list. We work each of these, began at our public work sessions to bring them back in chunks to say, here is what it would do for this, here what it would cost for that as we continue to progress. Is that what I'm hearing?
And that, I sensed that because no, no one said otherwise at the table.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And I don't know if I missed, if there was any proposed funding for the sports complex? There is any?
That comes in CIP.
Okay.
I mean, in CIP, and that's in the CIP.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, if, if this is in the wrong area, any additional, any funding for marketing for our tourists?
Tourism. Yeah, we're addressing tourism in this year's budget.
Okay.
If we got a wish list, this is, this is a big one. It's not going to happen anytime real soon. And we've done this once before. A permanent public safety headquarters, a real building, the whole, built to suit for all the appropriate things that are necessary for police, fire, sheriff's deputy, sheriff's department, if, if they need additional space beyond, and training facility. Maybe that's not the same building. I don't mean that it's the same, but get them all together in one place, the city-owned and is functioning.
Mayor, this past council tasked us with that. We are ready to bring that forward. A team had been, you remember, you all asked us to, we came in, we, a team has been working on it now for six months, so we will schedule for you all to hear what the findings are with everybody having input in, and the cost, proposed cost. Don't ask, don't ask. And I have public safety building on here.
I, I know when you were speaking, Dr. Patton, about you had mentioned the fire station in Truxton, is that separate from?
I just put that up there because I've heard that. That's for you all to discuss. But with that, I had the public safety building because past council had tasked us, go do research study, bring it back. So we're ready to bring that back, but you all will have to discuss where you want to go with the, the others, Truxton, whatever.
All right. I would say to be redundant, I would put Truxton Fire Station as number seven. All right. After the 2018 budget, would you put a hyphen and put wish list?
Yeah.
So the Virginia ballot, then put it on the front page.
Yeah, wish, wish list.
Yes.
And this is, to complement number three, my wish would be that we staff up in public safety where we have vacancies, we go ahead and, and that's number eight.
And that was staffing of public safety?
Staffing.
Staffing of public safety.
Okay.
Public, public safety would include 911.
At home. Fire, police, EMS, and 911 dispatchers.
Okay. If you could scroll back up. To recap, we have current budget, and we've asked the city manager to bring back ordinance to appropriate the funds for the retirees for our consideration at the next meeting. Whatever is necessary to keep the funding, it's probably just language for HRA at 1,400, and to give us a status report on your tourism marketing. All right, the first two are action items. In 2018, this is our wish list. Increase funding in education amount to be determined, eliminate funding for the Sports Hall of Fame, report on current vacancies, those vacancies which have been vacant for one year.
Mine wasn't really a wish. It was, what's the plan?
Yeah.
What's the plan to meet that, to meet that 1.7 if we, if we don't get it from the state? What, what, what we're not going to do? Or what we're going to cut? Or what, what additional income going to come from?
What's, what are the?
The source of income.
Public safety headquarters, Truxton Fire Station, and staffing of public safety. All right. Everybody comfortable?
Yes.
All right, that takes us through our budget discussions. Well done.
Thank you, sir. And we've completed our presentations for this evening.
This brings us to our city council liaison reports.
Save it.
To break the ice, the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization met last week, and I gave you a report, which is this document. I'll summarize it. The TPO amended the long-range transportation plan to put those projects that are called in the Banach, the Bowers Hill projects. That's the improvements to the Bowers Hill interchange, the improvements to the high-rise bridge, Bowers Hill to the high-rise bridge back into the plan. They also gave us information on the $7 million that has been allocated to do the further environmental impact analysis on what is called Paver's Crossing. I asked that, and they indicated that they were going to try to develop a memorandum of understanding between the TPO and DTA. And I asked them in that process, and make sure that they have the cities of Portsmouth, Suffolk, Chesapeake, and Norfolk as part of that process. Then the second item I have is the letter that we sent to the leadership of the budget committees, the Senate Finance Committee, and the House Appropriations Committee that deals with our bridge line that might be easier to understand. It's, is the treasury line. Any other liaison reports?
I have two of my three. The Military Affairs Commission did not meet in December and meets for January, the end of this week. For the Economic Development Authority, in our meeting last week, we were able to provide an interior build-out grant of $10,000, which is the maximum allowed for one grant, to the Legend Brewing Company, which is building a brew pub in the Number One High Street Building. They're building out 4,300 square feet. They're spending about $500,000 in that build-out. They'll be opening in the spring, and they requested the grant to go towards their electrical costs. So that was a nice thing to see and nice to have them coming online. The Port and Industrial Commission met today. They passed a resolution, I'd like to read a, just a portion of to you regarding VIG. And I'll, we'll have copies sent to everybody, but the, the bottom line is, their resolution passed was that the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission supports the growth and success of the Port of Virginia, but such growth must be coupled with fair and equitable treatment of Portsmouth and the other host localities that disproportionately bear the negative impacts of expansion. Therefore, resolve that the Board of Commissioners of the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission expresses its full and unqualified support for the efforts of the Portsmouth City Council and the Portsmouth Legislative Delegation to compensate Portsmouth fairly for the negative impacts caused by the expansion of VIG and other port facilities.
Thank you.
They are doing some work with their General Assembly delegation, just like you all will do tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. I attended two of my liaison meetings this month. On January 12th, there was the annual organizational meeting of the school board where they elected their chair, Claude Parent and Costella Williams as their vice chair. They went over their budget list of items, which Dr. Bracy will be presenting to the city manager this Friday. And it was quite a list totaling $9.1 million. And, you know, me being the new person, I wanted to know what was the last year's budget. And so, you know, I'll get that information. Some of them seem realistic and some seem like, of course, like we just did, they're wishlish, wish, wish list of things that they wanted. So we'll take a look at that. But in my opinion, being my first meeting with the school board with the information as far as council, it seemed that, you know, we're two separate entities of enemies. And, you know, it was like they blamed us for the things that they didn't get. And, you know, I want to be the liaison that, that serves as a bridge to gap, you know, us working together for the common goal, which is to, the progress for Portsmouth. So hopefully, we can come together and take a look at their budget items and, and come to some agreement, you know, you know, just like Dr. Whitaker did express. There, there needs to be an increase in the education so that they can get some of the things, the education budget, so they can get some things done. And yesterday, I was at the Virginia General Assembly and the Virginia Education Association was there. So I had an opportunity to meet with them and, and looking at the presentation that Dr. Bracy gave yesterday at the public work session with the pre-K centers only being four. And the conversation keeps coming up that there are not enough centers for pre-K students to attend, that there are some parents who want their kids to go, but there are not enough centers. So we just, you know, I want to take a look at that because we lose those children at an early age if they don't get that advantage to be able to read. The comment was made that children in their early years learn to read, and then later in life, you read to learn, you know? So it's important that they get that early education. So I'm, I'm glad to be able to serve in this capacity and to bring you more information going forward. The second liaison meeting that I attended was the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority meeting on the 19th. And of course, they have plans, right now, there are seven residents that are still remaining in hotels, and it's their plan to get everyone out by February and move them to the Lincoln Park development. But there was also a resolution read that they're going to demolish, there's demolition set for the Lincoln Park for 2018. So they're going to move residents in, and then within one year, they'll be looking for new homes or housing in, in our current apartment structures or affordable housing for them. Let's see, they are also, the downtown DD2 Board and Commission is looking to possibly place a Wendy's on London Boulevard, but they're running into some of the same kind of problems when I said on the EDA with the plans, the plans that are there are not currently set for the Wendy's to be constructed there. So they're going back to the board to, to look at what they might do to get some kind of waiver to see if in fact that Wendy's can be on that same strip with the McDonald's and KFC that's there. The last, last point of concern for me was that I was asked by the vice chair of the committee, because the chair was out sick, that should I excuse, recuse myself due to a conflict? Of course, everyone know that I'm a business owner with Lucas Lodge and Cooper Swang and Davis provides our State Corporation Commission filings, and they also are working with the estate planning for our CEO. And so she asked if I did have some conflict, and I didn't think that I did. So I spoke to the council who was there, and their new legal counsel on the PRHA is Karen James, who's an attorney. And she didn't think that I did. But just to be sure, I am going to get an official statement so that when I go back to the meeting for next month from our, our legal counsel, we will know, in fact, if there is any conflict for me to be in on the closed session relative to the Cooper Swang and Davis issue, so.
All right. Vice ma'am.
Ms. Simmons gave you the report on the EDA, but I just would add that EDA had a presentation on the focus of the marketing of the properties that they, they control for the city. And the team that made the presentation actually included the owner, Mr. DeVries himself. And they aggressively marketing several properties on the Victory Corridor and as well as downtown. And the presentation include the, all the things they're using, social media, the print media, the hits they're getting and so forth. And there's some realistic conversations about some places that are harder to do than others and, and what you can do in some places. And understanding that, and Mr. DeVries want to make the point, understanding that it's a, it's a long time from, from contact to development. That we, that people think it happens overnight and his, his, I think his words, where Ms. Simmons correct or wrong, his, his average is about eight years from, from contact to development. So that, that was eye-opening for, for a lot of commissioners, as you saw, when he made that comment, they saw people's eyes go, wow, that long. I'll be, most of them were thinking in their minds, we'd be gone by then. But that's the way the process worked. I know from, from my time serving on various boards, commissions, a lot of those things we talked, worked on back then, I saw them happen when I got here to, to council. So that's the, the way it works. The planning commission did not meet because their meeting would have been the same time and place as our reorganization meeting. So they'll meet again next month. But, but they're counting on, they're continuing to work on their comprehensive plan, talk to stakeholders and putting that together. And so for the new council members, if you haven't had an opportunity to sit down with the team working on the comprehensive plan, I would encourage you to do so, all that the other members have, and just to get, to give your, your thoughts and feedback on where you think we ought to be 20, 25 years from now, what, what you want to see, and sit and let them roll out, call out those ideas together. And because, believe it or not, those plans work. The, the previous plan that I worked on as a commissioner, with things that happened on Victory, we talked about there. Things that would happen on Frederick, we talked about in that plan. And Mr. Moody and some of them were on council at that time. So those plans work, so I'd encourage you, and you do, Mayor, for sure, to take the opportunity to, to sit down with them when you have the opportunity.
We'll schedule.
Thank you. Good point.
We'll go schedule.
Anybody else? Okay. Do you have anything else?
Mayor, members of council, you have in front of you three memorandums that are follow-up information from our session last night. One on bulk water contracts, tax support debt service, and 2016 history rules comparison tax bills as it pertains to the information we have currently in 2016 and will be getting one for 2017.
These are the things that we asked for last night?
Yes.
The chart, I assume is being.
That chart.
Yes. And so as you read these, if you have questions, please. And so, as you read these, if you have questions, please share those questions with the city manager.
And I have one other thing from you. We had an article that was in the Virginia Pilot probably about two weeks ago regarding the reduction in crime in the city of Portsmouth from 27 to 13 in 2016. And Mr. Pace will briefly tell you the development of that article farther, and today it was launched, and how many cities and newspapers across the country as of today are publishing the article.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As Dr. Patton said, we positioned an article to local and national news sources entitled Portsmouth Crime Reversal Initiatives Receive National and Local Prominence. That's what I'm telling you. However, the marketing communications team crafted a story entitled How Portsmouth, Virginia Used Police Friendly Engagement to Reduce Crime and Increase Trust. Twenty-seven homicides in 2015, thirteen in 2016, to bring national and local attention to the Portsmouth Crime and Reversal Initiative. In an effort to give the story an opportunity to have its highest chances of being picked up by online and electronic media, the team purposely waited until after the 2017 presidential inauguration. Of course, we don't want our information to get trumped, if you know what I mean. The strategy, strategy has paid off significantly because on today, at 1:00 PM, the story was released, and the local news media and national news services by 3:00 PM had picked it up and published it in over a hundred and sixteen publishers nationally all across the country. Just to give you an idea, Long Beach, California, Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, Buffalo, New York, and Columbus, Georgia, just to name a few. In addition to the online sources so far, Chief Tanya Chapman will also be interviewed on WHRO's Another View hosted by Barbara Hamley, and we will also work on getting her on PCTV's At Your Service hosted by our own Dana Woodson.
Good, good job. All right. Do we have a need?
So, this was, so if we're going to champion that, that it was the engagement of the police with community-friendly type of activities involved, then that contradicts the necessity of filling all of the vacancies in public safety. Because those crime figures went down when we were not at optimal level, which goes to support the data that's out here that the more police you have, there's no correlation with that reducing crime. So, I, I want to commend our chief, but also, we do know crime occurs in cycles as well. But I would like to just point that out since that was put on the wishlist, and it's this whole notion now going through the nation about law enforcement and tough on crime. And we know that those tend to be cold words in certain communities that have not been favorable. So, I just want to raise that since we're championing that, that this is what caused the decrease.
Thank you, thank you. In public safety, it's more than police.
Yes.
It's also fire and nine one one. We do need a motion to go into closed session.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section Subsection 2.2, 3711A7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation. So, consultation, open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating, the litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding Victory Crossing Developers Two versus the city of Portsmouth, Virginia and all. That's Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL 16003622-00 in pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers specifically regarding council appointees and appointees to boards and commissions.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?